So today we're going to talk about Facebook Live. And we're going to be talking about more things like COVID-19. And today we're going to talk about Washington, and also about the September 1st, Sunday. And it's National Gold Star Families Day. And we're going to talk about the election of Mayor Lizer, Vice President. And today we're going to talk about the Navajo Nation. And we're going to talk about the Golden Star Mothers. Today we're going to talk about the election of President Obama. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Trump. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Biden. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Trump. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Biden. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Trump. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Biden. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Trump. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Trump. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Trump. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Trump. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Trump. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Trump. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Trump. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Trump. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Trump. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. So today we're going to talk about Jonathan Nez, the president of the Navajo Nation. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Trump. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Trump. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Trump. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Trump. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Trump. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Trump. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Trump. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Trump. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Trump. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. So today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. Last Monday, we had a lot of news happening. And Tuesday, we had some news happening. And yesterday, we had a lot of news happening. And today we had a lot of news happening. And today we had a lot of news happening. And today we had a lot of news happening. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi. And today we're going to talk about the election of President Xi.
You know, I want to first of all thank everybody that is out there listening on the radio, listening on Facebook, and appreciate y'all turning in. Many people, maybe including myself, were listening to online church and that encourages people on this weekend. I know that this is a 57-hour week in curfew. And let me just tell you why. We have had cases increasing over the week. We had on Monday, 11 cases. And Tuesday, seven. We also had Wednesday with 28. Thursday, 42. Friday, 26. And yesterday, 32. See, we report these on a daily basis. These are 24-hour numbers. Now, if you put all these seven days together, that's over 100 cases right there in one week. And that is a concern to the Health Command Operations Center as well as Navajo Nation Leadership. And that's why we're having a special forum online and Radio Town Hall today to get an update from our Incident Command for the Health Command Operations Center and also Indian Health Services and other individuals to give us an update. There have been 104,746 people who have been tested, or close to 50% of our Navajo people have been tested. 10,269 have tested positive. Of those 10,269, 7,250 have recovered from COVID-19. And 552 again have lost their lives to COVID-19. Let's continue to pray for those families who've lost loved ones. And in the state of Arizona, so I'm going to start talking about what's happening around us now because it's influencing what's happening here on Navajo. All around us, you see, beginning to have increases in cases. For instance, on yesterday, 459 new cases in the state of Arizona. 459 cases. And then in New Mexico, yesterday, 206 new cases. And Governor Lujan Christian did send out a press release saying that, you know, that's a concern and we're trending in the wrong direction. We're supposed to be bringing them down. You know, Navajo people, we've done a great job. You've done a great job in bringing the number down. But I think really we just got complacent. I hate to say this. Complacency means that, oh, we have real low numbers. I think we all heard that two weeks ago, we had no cases in one day, 24 hours. And so that makes us say, oh, well, we don't need to do other those things that were mandated to us. But you know what? There's no cure. There's no vaccine for COVID-19. So we got to continue to do what we're doing by wearing masks, social distancing, washing our hands with soap and water, using hand sanitizers, and staying home. And we do have a stay-at-home order, shelter in places back, and the 57-hour curfew. And the reason why we did that was we need to make sure that we get under control with these cases. These cases that are in the Sage Memorial Health Care Facility area, they cover seven chapters: the Gannato, Kinbathachi, Corn Fields, Clagato, that region there. That was a big concern. And that's why we went out there last week to hand out hand sanitizers and masks and COVID-19 prevention information. And we also are looking at Eastern Agency, the satellite chapters. And now we're seeing some Utah cases coming up because as you know, I'm going to transition now into the state of Utah. Several days now, there have been 1,000 or more cases per day. Last week, they set a record of an all-time high of cases. So it's coming from the northern part, Salt Lake City, and then going down into the southern part of Utah. Now, that case that we mentioned, Contact Tracers, identified the Sage Memorial outbreak coming from an individual who went to Utah, got infected, came back, had a social gathering, a cultural gathering. Everybody got infected at that gathering. And guess what? Everybody went home with the virus. And so it took us some time to, you know, interview some of these individuals. And you know what? This is what we're going to be find. This is what we found out. And probably, this is probably what's going to be in the future is that some individuals didn't want to be forthcoming with information. And how do you force someone? You can't force someone to give you information. But it's important that we get the information so we can isolate and quarantine those individuals that are testing positive. And so we are looking at other ways to do that. And I know everybody's like, well, you're taking our freedoms away. Well, if it's affecting other people, then you should be forthcoming first with the information. Because you're you, if you do not give the factual information or no information at all, you are potentially hurting other people because the spread can go out even further. And that's something that that we need to be aware of during these times of spikes. You know, this is going to happen. I hate to say it, ladies and gentlemen. These type of outbreaks will happen because there's no cure. And if we do not adhere to these public health orders, wearing your masks. I hear people out there saying, well, you can't tell me to wear a mask. Well, if you're not going to wear a mask, stay home then. Because we want our Navajo people to be health, healthy. And our elders, of these 552 deaths, ladies and gentlemen, over 60% of those deaths are our elders, 60 years old or older. So we got to protect our elders and protect those in that vulnerable population category. You know, we're doing our very best. I mean, people have complaints, people have, you know, you can't make everybody happy. But studies do indicate that what we're doing, and you heard it from Anthony Fauci, that if you follow through these recommendations, you can keep the cases low in a region. And we did that. And we saw the positive response in that these past few to several weeks. But we can't let down, ladies and gentlemen. And I pray that we continue to talk to your children. It's up to moms and dads, uncles and grandmas, aunties, to let our younger generations know what they need to do to keep this virus from spreading. Some of us grew up with some tough love. And I don't see why our way of life teaching can't uh our our way of life teaching can't help us to respect and honor our healthcare professionals. And uh we appreciate the work that the Health Command Operations Center is doing, our uh UCG, or the Unified Command Group, and many, all of our uh healthcare professionals that are working for the Indian Health Services, working for the six thirty-eight facilities throughout the Navajo Nation. Then they're doing their best. You know what? Some are getting frustrated. And they're calling me and saying, man, people are not listening. And a-all I say is, well, it's it's, we we've been doing it since it started. You know, I'm, we're out there on a daily basis almost, helping give food and supply uh hygiene kits to our Navajo citizens. And uh you know, back when when this outbreak of tuberculosis happened, you know, Annie Winika was a champion of getting people to understand. And I think that's where we're at again right now. Yeah, there is some pushback against science. But today, many of us probably have a vaccine in us already. Either either for mumps, rubella, measles, or if we already took the uh influenza, the flu shot. And so those individuals back then relied on science to help us get through this, these types of pandemics. And Annie Winika was a champion in getting our people. And I'm sure they went through the same thing we're going through right now today. But we just need to honor and respect those healthcare professionals and the work they are doing on behalf of our Navajo people. We are a resilient people, I always say. And we just gotta work together continuously without wavering, without getting complacent, without saying, oh, man, well, it's gonna happen anyway, then, you know. That type of attitude will really defeat us. As our ancestors have fought on to protect our way of life and our protect our future, we need to do that the same way in this era. And I challenge all of us on the Navajo Nation to abide by these criterias. You know, there, I know there's a lot of complaint about wood hauling. Uh you know, I remember when Grandma used to say, you're supposed to haul wood during the summer. Da de chil' on da na nacha. That was some tough love back then. Now nowadays, you say that and people are gonna probably already commenting right now. That tough love builds resilience. That resilience makes us overcomers in times like this. And we're all in this together, Navajo people. And so we need to abide by these public health emergency orders. So n'he k'do ad'shanit ah. Ni j'obain shke ch'keiro shina. Hadainosina. Di na shnegi ah di akon. Na shneko da. Ebi ni na n'he ze do, n'he chi, b'ke dasht'ke, oh, kon'txa da do'k'xa. Ni l'at'cha da'kes. Aro, yirig'ol, ya da'lt'ke, ah, gan ndas'ot. Na tsos di na n'he azel indan l'negi nas'k'de'le'ah. B'ke da'ol eh, ah sh'wan shkeiro shina. Di bi'ch'eh di ka'oh da, el ka'ane'ch'ah. El ke'je ya de'lt'ke, el ke'je n'de'lnesho, eh, di oh. Di hot ah, dendel ke'ch'hi do lel, nas'kon. J'oh ze ba'at'eh. Ebi ni na k'do, n'he j'obain shke, na masan etche nal'na'ahl'negi, n'he gis'i na mad'oh ze do. K'do ni m'da k'egi b'ch'eh ya da'lt'ke. El ke'day, ya oyoh shke'je, ya't'ke'egi, n'he ch'eh ya da't'eh l'ende. B'ken di l'tch'al'ende. Adi che nas'ta si tli'oh, ah heh da di ne. Ah heh la'od'ash'eh ah'oh, zi, nas'ko da, be'ah'oz'endah. Hadaini l'ni do, n'he cilo, od'ei, ad ah, n'he cilo, nas'ko de'ini k'at'ol lel, da di ni do lech'keiro shina. De'ne ni tli, ah, ni l'sh'ho. Eh nas'it'it'ol lel, na n't'ch'negi. Ah k'do da di ne. N'he oh, il doni na, n't'ch'endon i z'ad ya konni. Kon de, n'he nax'ol, la'ani l'sh'ho. Keni tli'negi. Ebi ni na. El ka'ane'ch'ah, da'ol ch'le'el, sh'eh eh di bi'ch'eh di ka'. Ah heh la kon'ta, is'no'ts'ag'idan, da n't'ch'na'lig'eh she'eh, eh she'eh, kat. K'do azel indan l'negi do, na t'aani, la'ja. Ah n'chan da, deshi b'ch'eh, k'os'le't'ol lel. I'd like to turn the time over to our Deputy Incident Commander for her update, Ms. Brenet Pye. Thank you all. God bless. Ah la, da'ol, yeah, di ni l'al'od'ah, yeah.
Oh, heh, ya't eshanat'ah, heh, w't'ao ekon, ch'ich'ewin ah. Uh k'ro'igi ke'eni ch'eh, esht'ahon shinto, aro, aro j'oh, eh, k'do n'ch'eh'oh da'sh'al. Shei Brenet Pye ni ch'eh, z'ahl'ani shlo'ki, ah, ni bash'ach'chin, b'ch'eh ne'da'sh'ch'ero, ch'le'chin ne'da'sh'nal'eh. Oh hot ah, eh, de'ne esan shlen. Ah yesit'ash'ke'de'egi, b'ch'eh od'eh t'eh'ra, ah, da hul'yen'de'eh, ah, yesit'ash'ke. Ch'nanesh'nat'eh'de'egi, k'ro'ts'ena'ah, astan'de'egi, eh, k'oh. At eh da kon'ta k'os'un tsanas, eh, za'da'hegi, nal'ka'hegi, da't'eni, da eh'ot, eh, k'egi, ge'eh, sh'nanesh'eh, eh, w't'ao na't'na't'eh. Aro, be'la'ja, nan'e'egi, eh, kon'ta, eh, bel'ag'anic, ach'oj'j'ok, eh, Deputy Incident Commander, de'chnila. Eh di ke'eni na t'aani, di k'egi, da'inis'igi, Health Command Center, de'egi, k'egi, ge'eh, sh'nanesh'ido, hot ah, eh, kon'ta, t'apik'ens'ee. Oh k'oh go, di k'ay, sh'nanesh'nat'eh'egi, is'eh ne'ka'da, azel inda, dan l'ne'ita. K'do Indian Health Services, da't'eni, da six thirty-eight health facilities, de'chno'da. Eh aja, azel en'w'l'had'as, ani, ne'be'ke'yah'je, e'egi, ge'hot ah, eh, l'ch'ij'eh, n'dal'ne'sh'do'lel, l'ch'ij'eh'eh, ya'd'al't'ke'do'lel, do. Hal'eyt'ah, ekon, de'neh, b'ke'yah'has, ani, g'egi, do, de'neh, k'egi, il'as'lay, dan l'ne'igi, hot ah, ekon, be'ka'di'cha. Hal'eyt'ah, ekon, da, n't'ch'negi, bell'nt'eh'egi, do, hal'eyt'ah, ekon, bi'ke'ada, da do, t'ch'ink'egi, do. Hal'eyt'ah, ekon, da al'ka'egi, da't'eni, da eh, hot ah, eh, l'ch'ij'eh, n'de'lnesho, hot ah, ekon, cha'hol'sh'ish. Oh k'oh go, an'ley, da, t'ab'iyaj'eh'de'egi, ah'de'egi, kon't, n'he nanesh'igi, ge'ah, da't'es'teh. Ba'ya't'ke in l'ne'igi, do, nas'hot ah, ol'da'hegi, do, t'ah, ekon, di d'k'os'un tsan. Nas'eh, za'da, na'han'chn'igi, hal'eyt'ah, ekon, de'neh, k'egi, b'ke'yah'do. N'he ina, dan l'ne'igi, dan ch'ense'ke'si, do, las'lay, dan itl'ni, hal'eyt'ah, ekon, b'ch'at'ah, ni tl'on'ol lel. Hal'eyt'ah, ekon, be'de'neh, kon'ta, be'ka'di, da, da di noh, t'ah, ekon, had'as'ot zi, do, had'as'zi. Oh k'oh go, n'he na't'aani, l'ne'ekon, la'ja, s'z'ong, go, hot ah, ekon, ya'hat'zi. Health Command Center, hul'yan'i, ge'aj'eh, g'egi, hot ah, eh, h'jo'od'ol ni. Aro, at'elsh'ho, azel enet, ah, be'ke'yah', ne'be'ke'yah', k'ay, has, ani, g'egi, eh, at'els'hi, ya'd'al't'ke'do'lel, had'ol ni. Eh k'egi, Unified Command Group, b'egi, g'egi, hot ah, ekon, hadeliya, k'ay, ts'ena'ah, astan'i, g'ekon. Aro, kon'ta nas'ol'ka'lik'oh, eh, kon'ta, di t'ah, eh, d'k'os'un tsagi, ge'eh, hot ah. Ah yesit'eh, n'he de'neh, n'he k'as'eh, cha'al'ch'ineh, ya'n'das'ni. Di k'osh'eh, n'he de'neh, n'he ch'osan, n'he yama, n'he ze, da, dan l'ne'ita, n'he cha'al'ch'inda, kon'ta, hits'a'n, da, has'dei. Oh k'ob'eni yen'i, ge'eh, k'do'egi, g'ets'ena'ah, astan'de'egi, ge'eh, kon'ta, as'oh, da, n'he de'neh, n'he ke'edon, n'he de'neh. K'egi, n'he l'at'cha da'kes. Aro, ol'do kon'ta, el ka'and'ach'ah. Aro, ol'do kon'ta, na'ch'eh, ol'do kon'ta, at eh, n'he ch'ito, n'he ze, da, da, n'mfal'dol lel. Aro, di, ol'do k'ay, bel'ag'anic, ach'oj'j'ok, social distancing, de'ln'igi, da't'eni, da. Nas'eh, t'ah, k'ts'tan'go, t'ah, ekon, aro, ah, yesit', k'ay, l'hin'ah, ka'da, di ni do, hot ah, eh, ba'had'as'izi. Oh k'ob'eni yen'i, ge'hot ah, had'as'izi, ge'do, beni yen'i, na n't'ch'ni, hot ah, il'ya'egi, ge'eh. Di di, d'k'os'un tsanas, eh, za'da'hegi, l'ne'igi, h'jo'ash'eh'oh, j'ol'oh, go. Di k'hor'as'ol, y'ani, ge'eh, di k'egi, at eh, da, la, eh, da't'ch'aj'kes, o da, la'g'aina'il'igi. Eh di, ge'da, h'jo'da, be'ash'eh'oh, j'os'endol lel. Aro, at eh, al'do, hula'al'do, t'ch'aj'kes, do, aro, antiseptic, de'ln'igi, hand sanitizers, bel'jen'igi, da eh, l'do, da. Hula'ba'anj'eh, ihon'lo, go, t'ah, a'gon j'ag'ala. Gas station, da, n'j'eln'esho, da eh, hot ah, eh, esht'ah'oh, j'os'end. Every two hours, da di noh, da, hot ah, na't'eh, na't'eh, t'noh, hot ah, ekon, cha'hol'sh'ish. Oh k'oh go, aro, nas'hot ah, yol'ka'ch'egi, h'jo'ot, ah, ekon, ch'eh'oh, da'sh'al, n'son, ah. Nanesh'ind'ini, kon'ta, case management, ol'yan'i, g'egi, di kon'ta, de'neh, las'lay, nal'ka'egi, be'na'ch'eh, kon'ta, k'os'un tsagi, ba'nas'ti'egi, ge'eh. Eh k'egi, ah'eh, da, d'k'os'un tsagi, nas'eh, za'da, be'leni, ge'eh, ba'nas'ti'do. Eh k'egi, eh, da'il'ka. Ch'ela ba'ni nyala. Ch'ela, hot ah, be'be'ch'eh'eh'ins'ila. Ch'ela, hot ah, eh, ah, do, aro, ah, 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 ye'd'ok, kon'ta. Ah, be'ha'os'end'ag'oh, be'be'ch'eh'eh'ins'ee. N'za'da es'bal'ash'indan, da di noh, da, hot ah, na't'eh, di'el'kin. La'ta, ha'sh'ewait'ah, na't'eh, do'el'kin, da, n'he do, ni, de'beni yen'i, g'egi, eh, di, d'k'os'un tsagi, n'he ze, do, t'ah, n'he ch'ink'eta. Ah'eh't'ah, da, k'do, be'ji, g'egi, da, n'he k's'ta'so, da. Ei di gi 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 di choshdoit inegi la da ebich hi edilo. O koei di gi belechi iliyo, go ei hojot a ekon chadnoti. Ei bin i nacha ei hojot a ekon ndaidi kitla, kodot sanraosan da. O kogo di da akosun saagi gi ei hojot a ndaidi kaigigi ei kodot sanraosan da ei khwaegi. Na nas et a ekon IHS facilities, inle uh ze, ze baho. Ze et a ekon ek da da es igi a dae hojot aei bechindehlinash, ze ne khanigi da da ateni gi. Ei hojot aei a dae gi gi hi lta halne. Di ho, di ho aei ho liyane a daa da akosun saagi banasi, ni hi kaotje. Kodot iyan do thodo, hygiene kitdehlinigi a at ida, da kalawo shida ateni gi bezi. Ba thxada gesida, eh bin bebe, so ba da ateni gi da do aros. Broom, broom da, da ateni bin, bin, bin naalsho da, da ateni gi da ara inbech ne khodale. O kohesh daedan dad olel, o kotha fourteen days quarantine dehlinigi gi ei ara khwaehawanigi es daedan dad olel. Do kogo a da hui liad olel. Koegi gi ei, hola bechil kaah kodoegi gi ei, uh thoxa hna ganigi bebe, bebe, bebe. Hojot a ekon be ya i khaan da, uh khaan daatja, lto CHRs dehne. O kogo ei khwaegi ze ne kaigigi ei hojot a hi lkaan daatja ho. Di khwaegi ni hi eron hi dena bechha hanes guegi, ei khwaegi itchen da halne. Aro ero da da anle uh uh al curbside services dehlini, da anzada da. Hojot a ekon hi ndaidi lkitla, halant, halan, a shet ida nan san da no da. Ei hojot a ekon case management naal kaigigi, hojot a ekon. Halaid any chianigi gi anhi at e ndayesh, ah nda hanes gue, ntsi tsinash, ah nda hanes gue. At ida zein, ze chwinl inegi, shla nahasti da da no da hojot a ndaidi lkitla, ei khwaegi ze ne kaigigi, hojot a itcha. O kogo, uh hojot a ebekon bena neshinda. Aro kotha contact tracing dehne, e inal kaigigi gi ei khwaegi IHS facilities koda. Do six thirty eight health facilities, ze il, ene, ze, kotha koze il, ene da, da ateni gi da. Ei lto ta ekon ni hi khaan daatja. Aro hi lto dena khodo, uh deni lo, kodo CHRs, do public health nurses, ne da ateni gi da. Health educators koda, da ateni gi da kodot uh dena Navajo Nation, ne da gi gi ei hojot a ekon be khaan deitja. Atxada halne gi da, da ateni gi da. Eero da da naso ta nadid kitda, linigi da, ei ri gi khwaegi gi ei hojot a ina neshi gi da ekon belakhesa da. Kon CHRs da, linid o case management ki. Aro bechil tohla kaigigi contact tracing. O kogo hojot a egi gi ni hi chenade eshi lto ta ekon case management, oh contact tracing, o liyani gi ei hojot a hi lteho shanol. Ah dolel, adene. Aro kon nasegi gi khwaeben hi ltehananj, a dae gi ei kodot. Health command center deputy incident commander, o liyani gi gi ei khwaegi shi na neshi da na tegi. Ei khwaegi gi ei ni hi ltehananj, ahlo lel, khond akosun saagi nas eza da gi nchanlni gi gi. Ei kodogi ei sage memorial hospital, lok and heil, kintli chi, agatho holiyani gi gi ei. Kadegi ei aji gi naso ta dagok na deskit, na has, na nhi do ni, ni hi ltehanahod. Halaid a ekhojot ero olel, o halaid a ekon ta bin dena khwaegi bekeya has ani. Khwaegi community members, kintli chi do agatho holiyani gi ei aji go gi bekaadi cha. Aro shi na neshi da, go aro lto with executive director, shi na ani Dr. Jill Jim. Eb do CDC, da ateni Washington Danze il, ene da, linigi do IHS do, ze dekaigi, elhi khae. Ahojot a ekon emergency restraint team, egi gi ei hojot a ei developmentelia. Di atski liko bekaat ocha, atski liko, a, a, aro, at, at, atski likoegi khwaegi chian. Eero da da thoda, ero da da khon at ida, ba, ba, ba thxada gesigi do hand sanitizers, da ateni gi da. Aro di khwaegi lto napal da, da linigi isolation kit, da linigi da. Ei aji gi kon bebe kaadi cha. La daegi gi ei, la da ayu deskas da no, go ei kodogi gi ei IHS do, the health command center. Linigi, ei inle kaigi shi da laan danja, la, la hotels da, liyani gi. Ei ajo hyo da bechindehlinasho, ei ajo kon da ilni, da ilni o kon chahol shish. O kon de a shorin hi keeron hi dena, hojot a ni hi kaat ocha, da di ni. Bin iyanigi ei kon a shorod a, nadikit, linigi ze ne khanigi da, da linida. Ei khwaegi hyo bechada ho. Lla go, hi ltebahos no, ei atski liko, ei dena hojot a ekon bekaadi cha. A, atski liko, kon chian da thoda, da ateni gi da. Ei hojot a ekon uh dena, kotha bebe kaada deitja. O kogo onle, kodo lok and heil, aji akosan sage memorial je, do kintli chi do tlaga thoegi. Kadin do ba, uh sebi, ei hunela, ei kon uh chianigi bebe kaadi je. Ei lto bechil kaigigi gi ei, uh khwaegi hygiene kits, ni linid o thoda, da zaasla nige. Ei nakinik nakenda, neshi da, uh September twenty second, eh da ei hojot a ekon bekaadi je. Anas hojot a ekon bechil chi adel kitla, anas hojot a ekon da be deitja. Uh ze ine da, linid je gi ei aji sage memorial. Aro nas nanagi gi ei Alamo, holiyana da, ei inle je abakriki, de gi aji kakaia hojotsa. Ntilagani kajeho joko is satellite clinic holiya, satellite chapters. Aro ta, lto ei aji lto hojot a da akosun saagi gi ei, da, da godeskit ne da, kon. Yan bandastin, anhi do ni, hojot a hi chenaha hona sanraosan da. O kogo ei bin i nacha ei khwaegi gi ei alhojot a, anadelia. Ahat ida konda, ze ine da, linida, ze ne kaada, choshdoit inan dehkaigida. CHRs da, da linida, ho, 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 ho khaanagani gi da. Ei at elkona, elhi chenani khae. Aro, aji lto da nanak chahoko, ei aji kena da daesin, hojot a anadelia. O kogo anle khwaegi uh thot, 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 uh twenzian daegi gi ei. Um ei, ei di gi ei hojot a ei nadin. Food boxes chianigi, aji go bebe kaada je. Aro lto kon a, at ida, um hygiene kits dehlinigi da, bechada da gesu da ateni da. Aro lto thod, 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 do ta nada, nhi deno, do hojot a ekon aji bechenaanalia. Aro la do, ni hi lteho ta, da ni hi keeron hi dena, do thoba liyahili da, na nhi do ni. O kogo ei khwaegi gi ei at gidat, hola bechadegesigi watering stations dehlinigi. Ei di lto ta da, din ko ei aji kon chenada ilya. O kogo ei khwaegi ni hi den, ni hi dena hojot a icho da ido il da di ni do ei hojosa. O kogo ndehkaigigi ei inle New Mexico je, go ei aji go ni ebekaadi cha. Do ara lto ni hi kaat ocha, da di ni do ei khwaegi ilha da di aro hojot a ekon elhi chenanash. Aro lle na na nas, na na gi ei trohajile. Ei aji goegi lto ta ekon hi ltehanahod. Ei khwaegi gi di akosun saagi, lto ayus nchanat, ido lchineldo, ei aji lto banda, nhi do ni, onhi ltehanahod. O kono keo na da, neshi nel da, aldo, ni hi a, ni hi ltehanahod. O kogo ei bin i nacha ei na na, khwaegi elhi nanegi kaido lahananat a ekon. Ei khwaegi o kon nadabasiri ni do ta ekon, jangshi bechanaan thxado, jangshi chalahod, ei aji nada di ni. O kogo kona das, kaido di khwaegi gi ei di nisana nhi do ni. O kogo ei lto nadin, chian do, kodot, at ida, lto do thoba liyanda, ze linigi ei watering sta do. Hola bechada gesu da ateni gi da, ei aji kon nchene nada si ni. Aro lto ni hi ltehanahod, a lto inle ndaidi nishone. Ei di khwaegi tubasiri, lto ayu, ayu dagot deskit na nhi do ni. O kogo ei khwaegi gi jangshi halaid ela da di no, jangshi lse, nada di, kato, jangshi chhaa a ekon. Atski liko, lto ei aji go bekaanada deitja, da di ni do hojot a kodot health command center sanraosan da, ei hojot a ekon. Bin nacha ei hojot a ekon bekaadi je. O kogo ei hojot a, dena kajeho goegi, hojot a ni hi ltehanaha.
Aro kadegi belegani kajeho, for those of you that didn't fully understand or have difficulties understanding Navajo. The report to date from the health command center as deputy incident commander. The increased numbers at Sage Memorial Hospital in the communities of Kintlichin, Klagato has increased. And that, with that respect, on September twenty second of two thousand twenty. We here at the health commander developed an emergency response strike team to conduct an assessment. And also as well as provide needed services to that community. To date, we went ahead and we sent thirty eight food boxes, that's included with hygiene kits, water. And all that were delivered on the twenty seventh. With the outreach support services, we have identified nine additional families that requested for. Uh food and water and supplies and hand sanitizer. And therefore, we went ahead and we sent an additional food boxes and also as well as isolation kits to that community of Kintlichin and Klagato. Furthermore, with the incident and spike at Alamo Health Facility in the community of Alamo. One of the satellite chapters on New Mexico side, uh we did send another emergency strike team. Was sent also on September twenty second to conduct a community assessment. During that community assessment, we had a, basically a town hall meeting that was. Inclusive of the, inclusive of the president, also as well as to see and hear and express their concerns as well. So with that, we did deliver twenty food boxes, hygiene kits, watering stations, and also as well as. Water was delivered to that uh community. Furthermore, for the community of Tohajule, the same response team. And also uh same type of uh community outreach was applied to that community. With twenty food boxes, twenty hygiene kits, four watering station, all that was delivered on September twenty third. Cuba City is another uh possibility of uh investig, of a possible increase in that area. So we're gonna go ahead and continue to do further investigation and provide our needed assistance to the community of Cuba City. Uh case management, also as well as contact tracing, is basically one of my other job duties. Where we actually call and work closely with PHN. And healthcare providers to make sure needed supplies and also as well as additional contact tracing. Of the COVID nineteen patients where they have made direct contact with. And we provide that needed assistance and services uh to that facility. Um also with the case management, is inclusive of basically the home support, which was responsible to provide outreach. Assistance and works closely with A C O C logistics team. And as well as the community connectors, which is the CHR program. Underneath that branch is a testing, which is led by Dr. Hamid with Johns Hopkins. Who is a liaison to the IHS and six thirty eight work uh facilities to help them work and strategize. And develop a plan for the testing strategies and availability of tests. Calm care is under the direction of COPE, which is with Hannah Shin and Dr. Shin. Who are actually helping develop and actually interpret the data for the Navajo Nation. Again, uh from the health command center, we ask everyone to abide by the public health order number twenty three. Which was uh developed for, basically for the safety and well being of the Navajo people. We are so close to making sure to have control of the COVID nineteen. But it's our individual responsibility as a person to make sure that we do not spread the illness. The most important thing and the most important factor is the disease does not move by itself, the illness does not move. It's the person that is infected with the illness that moves from the community, community. That allows to make it towards community spread. O kogo ei jangshi with my closing remarks, shea, shekero shi dena, hojot a ekon. Uh shta shino, ah do, aro, uh ida, nadikit, da linigi da. Ei, ei, jangshi nabitida, shekita nosongo da. Ei jangshi gi gi khwaegi gi ajeni sanraosan, ei kon ta da dolel. Ei the hotline, nine two eight eight seven one seven zero one four. Ei hojot aei aji da dolel, do aro shi na, ei aji gi ndaidolki di gi aji gi hojot a ekon, adhi khaat ocha. Mkogo ei ahunso go, ni hi lteho shta ah dolel, shea, shekero shi dena.
Ya eh, shekai shi dena, shea ya, litas ga, nchiya. Esi hinshno, be tani basischi, ntilaslan, dasha chiro, tashche, ei dashinala. Be sinel, zeel, endo Winslow Indian Healthcare Center, aji eya, eshi na neshnaatji. Ze ne kaha, ze anhil inegi, ei hojot a eya, ei yesi ba ilka. O kogo kodot, um, nseho den deigo, hojot a da denashko, o kogo ei aro, ei inle uh. Lla go, ei aji eya, na neshigi, ei aji go eya, anashit old, eya, I'm acting the. I am acting community health service director for Winslow Indian Healthcare Center and the planning section chief. Aro, um, kodot, atka, eya, eya, na nchinnigi, ei hyo be, il, il ischa, na da di ni. Da di no, ei kodot eya, ei, atka eya, shahoa, eltehagi, eya. Um, shea, ni hi defshinil, anolthok, shekai shi dena. Khwaegi ni hi ltehanashigi, eya, dahuis aji, eya, do eya. Eyya ei, um, nanla ani, do ani eya, chuye. Aro eya, na, na ni hi nta, di, di, di naalni hi gi yego. Do hi lta, ni, eh inti da, atsis yen, tini, bin i na. Aro, di den dil kitdo, yandel kitno, o kogla jut, ni hi na tani. Eyya halne, do aro inle dahuis aji, hojot a, nda dilki gi do, a de, nde da atsis da, la neis la. O kogo di bitzado la, nda iste. O kogo ei bin i na, aro la eya, ei kwaende, aro hyo eya, ei, o tskinlko. Ei yo daalia, la eya, ei tahan di zeel id, daajulo. O kogo, aro bihekaagi, haanigi, ani, hojot a. O kogo, aro, chet, 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 hona, ani, gi, Burnett, e lto, ani, ihi ltehanash. Zeel, di, dena be, zeel inegi, um, dahuis aji. Um, Indian Health Service, do six thirty eight facilities, da linid aro tribal healthcare programs. Ani yego, a kuije, ihi ltehanash, do aro, di, 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 achena hot, do naalni. Um, bin na neshi, aro. Ei, ei khwaegi, ei yego, ei ihi ltehanani, aro, lla jut, chapter officials da linigi do. Leadership da linigi, lto ei, be, be, be lahan deitle, do aro, a, a, a kuije naaloh, behi ltehahui ne. Ya, endo ni, do, nacha hoon do, ni ligi, bin iye. O kogo di khwaegi, ei bach ehunsh ahagi, ei, ei, a ita, ei dekui ri xi bach inahuita. O kon de, lto, la, eh, chaanilaya da la, a sh, eh na na, haatila. O kon de, jo, 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 ei, ei, bin i na, adi, ninigi, et, aro nacha hoon ne. Aro la eya, do, do, eh hi lta, aro le beke di ti da. O kogo, di, um, bach ehunsh ahagi, ei, the symptoms of COVID nineteen, ilne. Khayta, eh di da akosun sa, nahast eza da, haegi, atsis yen. Do eh hi lta, atsis yen, tida, la, 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 cha shidet, eshi huent, inko. Ei eya, do yeo, yego, hatsisigi, yich, wudi lta. Na na la eya, ei yego, yego, yen, ti. O kogo, tzza chaila, chalaita, atsis yen, ti, do chaila be ahosim. O kogo, khae da, aho tsa, bedelnako. O kogo, ei, binao njiyago, edo da, behta, um, keho jut on. Na kiskan do, di tata, hiskanje, o kua, bitxaegi, ei di khaidenot ilo, aho tsa. Khoidenot il, o kogo, eltehagi, eya, ei, hatsisines, goydo lel, fever. Aro eya, ei, um, you can also have chills, ilne. Aro de akos, jidalkos, hasdool kostah. Aro jidalkostolel, aro nde da, diha, di na hasditsi, hi gi da, oyoh, laha odonil. La da, hastah jidanozil. Edo da go ei a yesi yego, chech jiditsi da dolel. Aro wahatsa go chech de yak, eh, aho tsa, hatsisigi, hojot a, aho tsa, khoidenot il. Aro hatxahon esgoydo lel, di, 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 hatos, eh da, hatsinida esgoydo lel. Aro hatsi tsin da, den, deni do, nesgoydo lel. Aro na na la sizin, la, la sizin, um, adi, atsis yen, inko go. Ei eya, ei di ajilni hi gi, do ajilchinigi, laha odonil, la da do ajilni da dolel. Na na ajilchina da, eh da do, do ajilchin da dolel, o kogo ahojot a huens tido. Ha dae da ho deno go, edo da, aro nde da, eya di haneaxt, eh da haneaxt hiltdo, kod. Ei oyoh, eh da huent, ino lel, jizkui do, aro ei, nji kui do. Eh da hojot a do ehint, aro inle hatshahodini, do, aho tsa, hatshanda hadona. A yego, yego, la, la, dekui eshi, hojot a, ya ha chaskhae. Ei yego, chech de chech da ditsi go, yego da hastah nzin go. Aho tsa da haent, ino, eh tskil, eh bin ye, eh zeel inko, eh hojot a ebisha stogal. Aro kona hasanana, da yego deno go. Ei lto yego huens, huens tigo, o kodo ni. Aro oyota di, haneegi da, oyota aro le, do o kodo ni da, aro le, a, a, bitxaanahalon. Do yota da holl ahosin da dolel. Aro chech da, chech ditsi dolel, di hatsisigi, o kodo ni, lota. Eh da, chech sidsi go, bin i na, eh di khwaeh, ha da, bina go, da oyoh, yidochi. Hani, da oyoh, laha odonil. Aho tsa eya, di da akosun sa, nas tesa da haegi, aho tsa ehint. Aro na na, um, atkuj, nahodiljushko, eya, lto, ei khwa, khwaeholjusho, lto. Ei, ilche, ilchen da di ti, nde inle no whatam, ei di akwaana holjush during the fall season. Ei eya, ei flu, flu season, jo, ei lto a, hojot a, ei, eh, de akos. Ehint, onle deh holjush, influenzae ilne. O kogo aji ko eya, lto, bitz on, a, a daatse. O kogo di akwaana holjushigi, ei hyo, bina nollchindu, eh hi deno, eh inle zeel ende. O kogo di de akosun sa, nahast eza da, jo, ei naalni hi de, eh, inni. Aro na na laegi, lto, naalni hi de, do de akos, aho tsa, ei, eh, aho tsa, ni hi ltebahosim. Alla at eh, choshdoit ini. Bitz a do, ilni hi gi di flu, linigi, do COVID nineteen ilini, eh, alla at eh. O kogo. Akwa, alla at eh, nde, a, all, a, allla. Eyya ei de akos, aho tonalni, aho tsa be ahosim. O kogo de akostodi, atsis yen, tini, lto asta, a, hi lte. O kogo, yini de bach ehun, ani, tsa, li kodo flu, linigi. Atsis nesgoy, atsis, 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 unesgoy, de akos. Ei aji gi, ei lto a, hatxahon ilgato, hasdalkosto, han, 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 haneaxt hiltda, le do, la da. Lto a, a, cha shit, eshi lto bepe yen, ti. O kogo kujdi, inni, naalni bach itda, sita, do khwaegi, eh. Um, bin dehlinashigi, nacha hoon do, ni, la di, ninigi, lto aho tsa ehint. O kogo, o kon de di flu, liyagi, ei, ei, eya, ei, bitz, eh, vaccine, ilini, a daatsegi, ei kolo. La jigie, eh, tahan di, ei, eya, eh, tato, kad, ato, ei hojot a, eya, ei. Ei, eh, bitz a, a daatsegi, tato da, tato la, um, tahan di, bina nesh. Ei hojot eh, o kogo. Eh di, at kwaan hi lteholjushigi, di khwa di, hojot a, pandemic, COVID nineteen pandemic, be di no. Kwaan ni de bach itda, sita, tato a yesi, nacha hoonahi, bin i na, do, kana dehkaasido, kwaan hi ltehanahoshi, bin i na. Eyya ei, atski lgojok, uh flu vaccines, eya la, zeel, inahasana go, ek, at ei da hazni. O kogo, aro ei, be da hadest, a, atski lgojok, di, a, daatotsi. Aro, ei, eh, di, 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 as a strat, preventive strategy, ilne. O kogo a bitse de tskinko, eh daatodonil. O konana, um, la eya, ei, na da idilkit. A shechha, while Derby flew along with COVID nineteen this fall and winter, no, eh na, edikit. Adi is a, la de akosigi, naalni dolel, ishva chit di, khwaeholjushigi. O kogo do ei hyo, eya, ei, o, ei, jo, a bantsaha kesit, oh, do eya, o, o kodo ni. Jo tahan di, e inal kahto, ek, at eya, tato nacha hoonahi, binak, akuj daanahodiljiji, bina. Bin iye, iltehana da di ni, o kogo ei khwaedik, a, a, anada atse. O kohoexe, ya, ei, flu vaccine, liyani gi, ei, eya, ei di khwa, ei, ei, ei beba atseko, ako. O kogo ei khwaegi, eya, uh we, hasthaan bin de ze do, dego, swisani, silkejukedat, ani. Eh, do bijo laanigi, eb, ei, eh, khwaegi, flu vaccine, beba atseko, eya, ei, ya, ei, a, koo. Na na, um, awayajet, ato hasthaan, hasthaan de ze bina cha, do yago, eh, eh, do ta. Eh da beba daatse da, aro yego, ei, eh, cha shit, eshi flu vaccine, di. Eh, eh, kujolao, eh da khwaegi, lto, do ta, aro la, um, achena hot. Eh da hojot a, cha shit, eshi, um, atsis, bitz einhuit, eh, go go. Lto ei, eh, eh, hojot inegi, eh, do, do, eh, ha incha, da, o kon de, ebina is de dohki. Aro na na sani, um, biltsa da, eh, ero da go da khae da, da bitz is. Aha da ital da, bitz einhuit, eh, go go, jo, khwaegi eya, ei, ebba atseko, eya. Chronic health conditions, ilini gi, ei, uh. Diabetes, hypertension. Aho da ateni gi, ha chena hot, eh, go jo, ei, every year, ei, eya, ei, um, haan daatse for flu vaccine. Na na, pregnant women can get flu, flu vaccine too. The only time, ei khwaegi, eya, ei, jo, ei, kujolao. Aro, most people with egg allergy can get a flu shot, jo hojot a do, khwaegi beka, jo hojot a. O kogo eh da, eh, ni hi ltehahonosan dolel, eya, ei di, a, aji, ni hi ltehanaholjush. Ei, eh, di, kwaana haljusho, ei, a, and, a, a daatse, naalni, do de akos bitz a, atsis. Atsis, sedo, de akosigi, bitz a, a, a daatse. Aho tsa, ei, inle, aho tsa, nda ilin go, ei, a, aho tsa, eh, do, aho tsa, ei. Atski lgo, aro yeo, delkase, hojot a, dekui go. Hot o d'kui go xi, hot o eyya ey esel ileni, esel eh esel eh b'na hastango. Achot o eyya ey yenta ha a atgilhko da ilneligi. Ado um aniri eh uh laha na hast o, do na idikid. Ey eya ey di d'khus ntsa, nast e tsata. Nal khahigi, ey sa tla chon eh. Ey na idikidigi, ey kwaegi ey eya ey. What does close contact mean? Ey kwaanaa idikid, cha isol ya di sad hot o naahodikid go close contact. Akoko, close contact eyya ey naahodikid o. Ey jo ey di nalni higi um nekholzenegi do chaxinltsogo. Ey eya ey um ey di hota desnaegi. Ado chedda cha na na ga da, ey aji go bededolnahegi. T'ato ba hozinhigi, ey nal khahegi, akwaegi. Ey close contact no, sadashijaa, ey khuje ntaalkhataligi, sadshi deyol eh eh. Akho ha isol ya close contact. Akho eyya ey di la jiz, d'khus nast e tsata, hotolna go go. Akho chedda da, chanago na ga, t'ato ba hozingo. Bededolna, bededolnahegi ey yisi b'lnol nenigi. E di ey chanago na ga do b'ltakehodjet o. E di hasthah ades es chanago na ga, ashlaa da, ahielki do no wachet. Akho ne akhot o chanago na ga, ey yisi b'lnol ni dolel. Ado na kiska, do ne, ado, ado, ado um. Di di ats is nal khahipenachet di, choid o ats is yent in. The schnobah huishneh, the symptoms, starting two days before any symptoms begin. Ek kwaegi nil khako. Ey kwaegi, ey close contacti nal khako, ey hot o, ey sadigi chon eh. Ado eyya ey um kwaegi ey examples ilne chexey jo hajoo bahane. Go, ey di close contactigi, chedda da b'lhagano go da. Achot o di hasthah ades es abecho, khonago na va. Edo da go b'ldjinani da, ey hot eh chaalchinida. Edo da go chedda da, le kitakoda, le thingoi gallo da. Ijilt eh go, jo eyya chidibi ye eshtah ades es abecho noh nahaz. Ado ashlaa da, ahielki digi no wate. Alla da, thirty one hour da hazlin go. Ey kwaegi, ey di di ijilt eh eh eyya ey a close contact dolel. Hu hu achot o, hulche, hu t'oh, hu eyya ey d'khus ntsagi. Hulche t'oh, ey that's gonna, that other person's gonna be a close contact. Ado na na chexey do close contact. Eyya ey di um achot o d'khus ntsagi huint in do. Ya enle um jinyaba hagana na eh, yajiyaw. Ey ado o chedda bi gata shdiyaw, jo ey o jo gallo es, ey o bi gato. Ashlaa da, ahielki bina chagada. Ado da esze danjti nil go da akwaegi da ey otskiinlgo ayajiyado chech didzah. Ado chedda da b'la jet da zazon, ey hot o, ey ado ashlaa da. Otskiinl go otalko go, ey do close contacts ilno, ya chehona akwaegi. Ado, ado na na la go eyya ey. Na na ey jo eni d'chena da huistani gi, binaju ey eh hil, ey nahui ilne. Akoko, ey, ey di, ey jo ey jis, haslaa ge. Haslaa, a a ajilnaa go da ahiilnjildego. Jo achot o di d'khus ntsa, nast e, e tsatahagi yonol ne. Ado jo di um nalni git a, ey eya ey jo. Nalni git a, ey di hazze jidilkhusu da. Eda da hatchi le hanaixt, hanaixt gil da. Halda ban sili go, di jidilkhusigi do, ado hanaixt gilita, ji t'odgo. A eya le cha da ban banhajila go, ado baajilchinhi di hazdolkesan da. Uh ban isanha da ban sili go, edo da go do um andetkinhida a ajilleh go. Ban sili go, chedda da ha kede na na tahligi, ado ya ahalchinhi, ne di ya yedelchido. Ado ida, illyi ya go, jo achot o di nalni. Akoko, di kwaegi, ey ey to to ebe anahat in da. Do eyya eyya ey ebinyeh ey di hot o bina miltinda. A ani, ey ey oyu ey be bohoditi. Hot, ado ndeta, shaqshinixin da t'seshin hunda ga. A laj, oyu laj njer tle go, ati kwa eh. Social distancing ilnenigi, do be da achota jilyango, do be da. Ado do be n'dahirin tkin go, ado do be nahatsis ago. Do do bayatki go o achot o, ani tskin go, tahdolwolna na jo achot saha ne. Akoko, di nihit ne ni dlenigi. Ado, ado nihinaantien doni he asta. Nihitsodizen ey yisi ey, ey tza ataha sala. A ebennache, nihiza digi be yeltiigi, ebeyi. Ebennache, ey di, dihudo ne enshla. Di eyya bashishchin, di dashichay, di dashinali, aachot o, aachot o ke di ne. Akoko, tsodizen edo agenei da da. Akoko, di kwaegi, hajoo ban si kes dolel, ey yisi ebinyeh. All a at o, ey yisi thaats, ey yisi lta at o. Ey ey yisi ey hot o ey, nihitsodizen di tsat. La eyya eyya di naltsos dihendje, aji ebe trahnitla. Na na la eyya ey kwaegi eyya ey um esel chon eh. Native American Church, ey aja na na. Na na lajey eyya ey um um traditional medicine. Akoko, ey kwaegi, ey during this time kwaanaaholjish go go. Ey be 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 baakoni dzen, aji slango, achot o. Etatcha hot o lilligi, ey abahasthi iye. Jo eni d'abatch ihod, hasthah ades es, achot o allanjildeh dolel. Ado na na hatchi big ita asthi dolel hazze do. Ado yoo ahanhala tchanad atigis dolel. Jo hot o, ey ey hot o, ey di naal khaji gi um. Ey aji hot o ye denhtado, ado i ilya. Ey i ilya ebennache achot o ya atza. Akoko, la chaxinid eshi, ado achot o. Eyya ey di anit, jo ade di naal khahipenachet jo dahuita. Akoko, la. La eyya ey um do denilzinda. Ado edo eyya ey um a sa um hawangon da. A o akoni kiugota, achot o, eyya ey eta il eh. Akho akwaegi, abe ahanhanidzin dolel. Ado edo il ini t'oh, ado le eh, esedoo, ado chel da. Edo da go do chiyanda, akwaachidow enigi, a a allan. Do eyya eyya ey, we don't, we um, it's not recommended to share. Ey hot eh, ado na na halatxana gis di, eni d'haanani t'oh, do. Ado um hatchi bedat es ba, hazze bedat es ba, do a allan. Achot o, ey yisi ey eya ey um. Etat, et achot o, aji, achot o bina miltindje, ey hot o baakoni dzin dolel beniya.
Ado um eyya, I have a co presenter here, Mister Leonard Chi. Um I'm gonna give him some time to go ahead and.
Ya tey tlasin lo ade da isaltsai don na, naal kit, naal nenigi. Kdo ishudejje, uh kwaegi ey di chinhaniya do sa tla be, dohannealanijje dolel. Do shehno, senegidi, ashka hatzohon shla, ashche bashishchin, na kredneh, dashichay, da isinali da. Na na pipi thoni, thodi chin ey shaltsanida, benle, kod a eden shla go. Um, naahut area Indian Health Services. Uh, I X S ilnenigi, it's ba hayanju, aji eya itaxanana shinsunno, ey kwa eh shahoa, iba hiensun. Ado, laago ya da, tchido hanneh da, in go. Hasthah da, sandezii, akoko, hati, hati dallah egita, ey na t'ani. Kdo ni jo hanatseh do, ilnadalneshigi da, hanneh del eh, akoko. Cha eshi be hanado sehdo, cha eshin sa tshananeh do, ni klo ay si bedelni dolel. Oh huintzin, akho nde, kdo shahoa, ibenach eshi, sa tla be hadestseh do. Uh eta ilin dolel, do di nchalar na huintzinigi, ey da. Etchisdeh in, na hananhuintzin, a noh tsoda la nozengo. Ado n'kaaltsundon, itso ken hinali ke, nihikei, b'leke da hot ini. Jo ey de, uh bahanhuintzinibena eh, kdo ta, adeneda, teneda, to eh. Deilni shi go go, ey ba hiensun, mikinamga. Uh Jonathan, Jonathan Nez, Navonishon President, ado, ke do da setahaido ilnadalneshigi do. It's ba hayanju, naahut Department of Health da oliao, I X S da. Khat a lkaa ney tja, ha konhon, shiba hihil. Akho di de, aita eh, kdo d'kui di xin ba haotzi. Um, jo di lahan daaleegi do, ltsedah ey, ntsado lahan daaleegi. It's ba huint in de, jo eni do, d'kuiska do xehi. Eljantad khuje ltehende, ichijikhego, khot ehegi, di nashni higi nas. Uh d'khus ntsana hasti zata, hanenigi, aholno, hotchahot, hotollel, hotela. Akho, khot obayat eltigi, ey, khotat ehegi, ltsayu eh, ltsahta, ta ta. Na kui nilzunoya t'eh, jo ta ehedi nekho. Ani, khotekada, hutri t'iltsehla, ado ahsundah. Ado di etan da haanom, na ke vitan elten, t'weh na khaha da edo ta eh. N'da ilthaha, da ha lepa, da hajooni gi benye hin, da iltakoh. Akho eh, de ikhaltoyo, bedanitlenon, kliada t'eh. Do chi yandha, b'shasan dey, ho eh, holjishin eh. Jo eya ta eh, t'adgitsna shahoi la, di de, uh nashni higi, akoko, ey b'na eh. Khotat ehegi ltsayu eh, jo ta di, na eljantad kwen, noh t'ehende. Nan talan de jo, jo nahodhi hazlin. Ado nda eh di, na na la la ashla eh, bitzado eh, w'dedolnahod eh. Ey beni na eh, hot o, b'nehtanhaldeh, biu eh, ha ne. Ado nda, um, di kad deytoni da, n'tuhalneh bigi jo do, n'tuinaldoi, b'nchagon eh. Aji go go ltsa, jidinil, oya t'eh, o hayujinli da hole do, n'khaaltsunno. So kebe da hole di, n'tuinaldoi, b'nchagon eh, xilhanneh, xilhanneh. Do ya t'eh da, ey benye t'eh huintzinoda, ey, ltschohaltsolna, dohtschahastotsi. Aji go egisnaxayat, esu daahebi, nekho go. Ado nda, aha wangon ne, xinbiyegonda, ltahtzilnigo. I uh ta ta, ta da benye, i kehda, a benye go. N'deho yahagi, ey yoo, konne yoo, nalni glad aha ne. Khatada, di sthahon, la da jilon, ey de, khot o ba hanneh. Ado nda, ado, la ay si lego, shidahata alteh do. Kad nehsthi, ndahatla haanom eh, ba da hanneh, nashchi da hazlin go. Jo ey, ey lto, khot o ade, hilnjilteh go, lto hole la, khot o eh, ba yada tchid. Ado nda, di chiyan, hin da eh kha, da eh ting, da eh yoh kha haanom da. Chiyan, aha daliago, hin da hi kha do chidoo, enigi. Ado nda, uh, uh kwaachiyan, be hadahakahegi do, be. Be benda khae da, allagichida jo llo, ey konne lto hot o. Uh, b'nchagon, achodolna, nashni, shahoba hanneh. Ado, nza go, lajilnio, hinji kha, lewo, naalki go. Al e benye da jinyaw, sabiga, naahastelsi go. To edo, da stort, ntskiinforale, don nicho, shahatas dotse, shahastotse. Hot o, ado nda, aha wangas, a gesto, lebe de todit, do, enigi da. Astei, das ishso, eh eh to, da da, ne sechende, akoko. Di to da, he di, hinge, eh, da, eh, eh, siya, da hanjada, unda, stra. Uh, stortin, gandich, kha, eh, hot eh, bezadu hanneh egit eh, go do be tshanawil ne. Ashitamasa dots, ado ndilbahosin, lande, jo da le, ba yatki o, d'kui di xinbehosnaan noh, nda. Aba akasnisil, go ey di it eh. Akho chedda da ilin dolel, si di do, da hanenigi, huintzinibig, b'na eh. Di n'tuinaldoi, b'nchagon eh, a ta, 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 uh, ltsuhadatsi zehdo lel. La, ado nda, d'kui de da hadatsi gis o, ey de, uh, n'alkidib. Do, b'shbehanneh, b'nchagon, kad hot o, behnda, anish, lehan sad, ne, chaxin sad eh, ne. Adeh, achodolneh, do eh, ltsuhadastotseh do, naalki digi be kha, sehelki dolel, go t'eh. Ado nda, naltsos, do big eh, shonchel, da, enigi, ey de, lto chedda. Kadeneh, t'iltseh do, al e benya do, naltsos be kha, shidolli, lto einle. Uh, naltsos, bigi dechidu, da, ado eh, isoshinho eh, hot o, ey lto, uh, bohaneh, sala. Ado, um, adi, hot o, eh, n'tuinaldoi, b'nchagon, ey gis eh, mahalensilin, akoko. Ado nda, di, dohuzo la, hilnjilteh go, go, ey di nashni higi, tankholzenla. Akoko, ey b'na eh, ay si abe cha di, tsitowa, da, inikha, ltaahosin, klo fi kee da, noh shlinigi. Ashhon iye, hot o, iba huint eh, akko. Di, n'tuinaldoi, b'nchagon, do, b'shbehanneh, b'nchagon eh, shu kad lta, allan da tle. Nihiltoh akatvini, l'onko, di, mas, maskona do, lligi be, aholzenegi, t'ela. Ado, ado, hunneh, lahttaleh, am, adla ango, chidjo khae do ta. Ay si da benye, holenno, jo ita, togi, shahastotsi, la, do le, ke da, chikidoo, toho. Ade, edo ay si, n'tuigi, la la chon in da, jo tanhilleh ne. Ado nda, di, hasthah, deses, uh, yen sad eh, naaltehegi. Khot o, go ba hanneh, ledeh, taltsos la be bejashon eh. De pena, ki go, khesizin bi gaho, andol ya jan six feet, shahat es. Eshin bigi, di chin, benye, hot o, hanneh da, oh, ey, ey, ey ba da huilme. Ado nda, di, ashtinid, aha hunni, je bejashki, do, chin bejashki go. Ey lto, aha yosin, jo ne, hot o, um, ay si, aha nalni higi, uh. Uh, masko bigi ilmitla, khat aye, ba, 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 ba hadestseh do, benye eh, go shahoa. Ado, etan do, t'ahla di ting, hanen gil, do, aha da jollih, o t'ela, di n'tuinalki debiye. B'nchagon eh, konne olki, kwa ey olkha, ishamha da toh gis do, ltsundahodilme. Da di ting, da juno, anle, haagande, chiyan da, liadot akho, olanki, ita chiyan. Etatjollihbo, ey jo ey, xinb'na khato, ha lepa, hajon, ha chinda, iltahagi, ey lto, ka, istollihbo, t'ela. Ado nda, b'shbehshachannehegi, eshin kadeneh, raaltsan da, hotso kliada, khera. B'latjilseh, kwa ey, b'shigi, behoshtolneh, akho, ey, b'shbehanneh, b'chagon eh, akho t'ela. Ado nda, la tachi ey, laago ba da hon, neh do, khot o eh, ya t'eh dolel. Ado, naltsos, ltsuindah, enigi, uh, ey lto ay si, jond dolel. Cha hat eh, naaltsos, cha de da hanalgo, chedda khuje ilne, washi bohanetlo. Zdi ltsos do, jo t'jenell, jo t'chaleh, akoko, ey b'na eh, aji, lto boolka. Uh, na chalanada di ne, ado do n'tuinalki bechagon eh. Akho t'ela, di de, laago eh. K'at elah di de, la'ago e, um, a do'ta' e ban da'altteh, khon'ede da, jo'li t'hal'igi, t'hal'igi da, ndal'ki'ido ben ye'ei, k'ad'sha'do'ka do. Ta' i, ta' i'ta do'na'ln'tol'ch'el ha'ne'igi jo' e'ilt'oh'ha'isi bahastki'do'te. Ko' ah'ho, ha'altshin'eh do, e de'it'et'ach'ila, a do'te'ta. A do'ti la, la'hanakis'igi do, uh, k'at at eh'egi e a i si', uh, do'ta'ha'ne. A do'khon'ede, um, ne'schri'da hazlen'go'ilt'oh. A i si'ta ta' ne'schri nda'hitit'la t'ch'zin'ro'ei, k'ado ha'altshinda de'ho'p'ilt'oto'ka'hi, a'ta'sati. K'at a ne'schri nda'ixt'ol'ha'ei, uh, k'at a'ho'na ne'shita'ixt'ol'ill'la, ta' i si'ta' on'ne'ko, jo' on'ne'ko'ho'ho'ha'ji'yo'ha'ch'la'ago. Rab'ho'hanetlin'do la'na'ndi jo' na'ho'ti. Jo' e do' a i si', a yo' bigi nan'ili ne'schli na'al'andit, ni t'lo' do'k'it'chin, uh, et'se'da domo'ye'echi, k'de' i, k'de' na'ta'han'eh'ko, e ben na'ra'sh'ho'ri xi'ke'ino'ch'engi. Si'zul'eh'wo' do'ah'ho'ta'san'ing, k'de' na'na lta'st'oh, ben ye'ta'toft neh'xi'ta'ni'ti, neh'eh'oh, jo' e'tsuz na'ha'ke'eh, do'li'et'la'ka'na'ha'ke'eh. A'da'la'stilt eh'ko, a'man'ki'zelt eh'ka'jo'ei khon, akon'ana'ssuz dol'ill'la, k'at a, e ya, um, a do'ha'slangi, uh, ban da'altteh, isit'handa'tle'egi ilt'oh'ka. K'at a, e, a hon'sheh'nde, a it'oh'ang'il'beh'hasin do, e ni ch'ha'dat'zeh. E ya'tisne, a le'ta'ong'ich'ha'na'oh, zigo, e lan'ich'ha'zigo'ko, in'ta'ha'isi, uh, ye'go, uh. Et kixen'ili'te, anolt'eh, e ba'akon'ohsin do, in'kinat'ani'ri'altikiri, ba'de'ohsin gi'chi'eh'eh. D'kui xin, a d'k'ol'te'ha, jo' e, e, a ni, on'na'ltteh don'le. Di ni, ta' i si'ye'go'ni t'lo'ei, ba'isi ba'hi'el'oh, d'kui xin'skhan. Jion'ede k'de'ha'no'ei, n'leit'lo'go na'st'adu, a de, a de, e di ha'sil'io' bel'ntzitza, bel'na'i, k'ade bel'ntzitza, e be'tsan'ol'ajin, e do'ta' n'leit'lo'ri ke'eta'ha'zani, ni hi't'cha'nda'ka'ho. A de' iln'ha'ka'ahl'ak'o e ben na'i, a'sh'ho'de, a, a do'ch'and i'ka'ya'te'ta'ha'wa'ge. Ha'jo' as'ta'ha'ne'ne'eh, ben'ta, ben'ta hu'il'ah'go'te'el'la'na's'ango, ha'wan has'ang'iga, k'ets'esta'i ha'xi, ona'et'ah t'cha'ha'j'osin do'lt'oh'oh'ta. A do'nda, lepe'ho'nda ne'schri do'be'gash'ita'ik'le'tre'ta'han'eh'oh, all'eh'ko, oh ha'yu'gon'ana'shita, k'ho'ol'ch'ana'alt'ha'ne. Di ban sa'ki'esi do'ak'ade' e'to'ni l'ixaxshin. Na'hu'sko'ei, miltsan la'ho'ill'ing'in, mi'ke'ina'ane, all'eh ap'at'ah il'ene'ne'ei, k'at'ha'hot'ed'ol'ell, jo' hu'in, on'ewil'ne. K'at a ye'ni ch'ha'deszeh do ba'hi'ens'oh'disne. ilt'cha'sin lo' a do di, uh, ga'isoltsan'egi, la, yo'yo' ba'hi'eta'ohsin, no'k'dona'tani gits'ha'dats'eh do di, na'ha'altshin'nan'han'adnixigi, chi'eh'eta'k'od'ne'ni. Chi'ba'hi'ensin, na'na la'ei do'ilt'a'il'ni'go'ka, na'nil'et' i, ha'dotsi hi'do'hol'ola, bo'ban ts'ezek'esh'la. Cha'de'ta'ch'de'ika'ho, k'at a'ta'be'zad. E'da'sp'enda'be'nestha', ha'ita'sp'oma', e'da'sp'etsche'ha'ita'sp'innal'eh, a'ta'xit'ab'ya'ho'ah, enne'zin'zin'la. La'nsitzin e, k'at at e yu'wen'hi'to'ni. Ha'hanha'ta no'tzin, ni hi'zad'ha'at'ach'li'ya, ta'ni hi'to'ni di'gi e'm'ha'ba'hi'ensin, k'at a, be'ch'ri'et'ail'ti'igi. K'olts'oh'ko'do, ha'deszeh do, na'hanha'hu'inzin egi'te, e, e la'te, a'klahan'le. E, e, e a'sh'ho'ri, na'ha'ben'ahl'ni do, na'ha'ba'akon'ohsin do, a do, do, uh, cha'dats'igi ilt'oh'ba'hi'ensin. K'olts'oh'ha'sti' do'le'la'cha'sin lo' a i si'ba'hi'ensin do, n'jion'eg'oi, n'ke'eta do, a lo, cha'da do ch'igi'skhan, in'navit'ch'eh, carnada' i de'lt'ha'hol'ah, a di ta'anis, do, uh, hol'it'ka'go'da t'sh'ne. Ko'ha'di'kista'be'et'no'ho, e di online be'et'no' peshva'na, t'ch'nal'do'i bigi ch'efet'ha'hol'ah, e'ilt'oh'ha'yo'xi, et'cha'de' t'lan'ha'len'eh, e'ol'ch'ilo, be'et'nen'igi hi'jo'ilt'oh'ho'ha'xi'et'ah. K'olts'oh'ha'deszeh do, sheh'eh, na'al'to'so.
Thank you very much for sharing some time with us and listening to all of us. So mine was mainly in the Navajo language and, uh, I certainly appreciate the time that's given me. Thank you so much. Uh, Lita Shin'Kato, she has another portion of presentation that she needs to address. So thank you for sharing your time with me and back to you, Lita. Thank you.
Leonard, um, thank you for, um, um, presenting and talking and discussing the importance of, um, social distancing during, um, and some of the key areas with, um, preventive, um, activities during social distancings and, um, universal precaution da'il'ne. Ekoko, al'ha', al'ha', haz'ana'go, a do, ba'hasin'et'ah, e e ya e jo'ilt'oh, ta'handi e ya e di, n'ki'ke'ya, tas'ani'egi don'le, hik'ei, n'hi'dne'at ke'da hat'ena'go, ta'handi e t'chat'eh, e ya e a ji e ch'ido, in'ilt'oh. Akoko, akua'e'ke, e e t'chat'eh inda'ing'igi do, a do, akua'e'ke, jo' di'ta'to'kona'eh dan, e jo' a ji t'chat'eh'ta ben dah'ha'ga. Akoko, ba, ba, ba'z'slang lata, oh hoth a, et'a'el'ena, e jo' e kua'e'ke ilt'oh, e di, hoth di, di a ji'ilt'oh, a ji'oh hoth a, la'ha. We have to mitigate ilt'ne, la'ha, la'ha'ena li'ago, jo' di e'el' enegi jo'jo' be, be, la'haslang'go'gi e a, e e kua'e'ke. We have to be careful. Akoko, some of the recommendations jo' di bayatki' do xin, hoth a, nhastwi, xin a ji hoth a, da' enegi xin di ya'yal'tki'. A do, e xin big, ak'oshin di hi'nil'kua'e. Um, ak'oa, here's what you can do to stay safe. E e di t'chat'eh haz'anja, one person and a sweat lodge, um, sweat lodge at a time, al'ha'z'zin'ego, t'chat'eh e jo'ka'ahl, la' e'ta't'oh'de. A do, a do, a do, e ya e di, um, t'wot'oh, a do, pesh, peshbeh'a'ija ha', e'ta'ch'utlan'egi do, um, a do'inda t'ach'ilt'ach'ido, e'oh, e do, e al'ha'ta, al'ha'ta, a'ta, you don't share the cup, you don't share the herbs, e a'ta' all'ah, go'tshon'eh'oh, e'ka'ta'ta'li'ago, hoth a, you prepare them individual for individual use. A do na'na, um, face ha-hani, a, hoth a, a'tas'de'ispa'han'iga, haz'e, a, hoth a, a kua'ende. A't'oh'inda'altteh go'ko, akua'e'ke, oh hoth a, t'chat'eh'ta'el'neh'ko. A do'le'hu'is'ade, o u'go ba'all'ha'edlon' e do'ta, al'ha'ha'wan has'ani'egi, a kua'e'ke, one family, oh hoth a, a'le'ko, e xin e'to, hoth eh'eta'ekon'ede. You still have to be careful about, um, social distancing, universal precaution there. A do na'na, um, e e ya e, a do t'chat'eh'tshon'inko. E ya, ventilate air out the sweat lodge for at least twenty-four hours before reuse. Remove and hang any fabric, door, floor coverings, and direct sunlight. A do, e'ch'idos' enegi di kua'e'toh, to'bes'han'egi do, a do ba'ija'ha'ta, e tanna'takis' do' disinfect indali. Wash your hands after or use a hand sanitizer with at least sixty percent alcohol. E kua'e'halat, halat clean'anal'itchanakis'igi e a, hoth eh, ilch'ijilteh go. You should only do sweat with people you live with, e ni de bacha'ho'na'and'le, a, a, all'ah, ke'da'ach'ido, oh, hoth a, n'kin'eh'ji'ka'ko, jo' e yisi e, hoth a, nou'le'ne, nou'le'ne ni't'izeh, hoth da'te. E di, um, all'ah de, hoth a, e'je'ji'ka'ho, hoth a, t'chat'eh e do'ta, nah'ha'ga'inda ch'il'inko, e do'ta go'do, oh, 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 e'je'ilt'ah'ko, jo' e kua'e'ke, e ya e yuwah, e hoth a, e ya, ani de, ch'da'hasit'ah. A do e ya, na'lin'eni do, e do'ta. E di, e jo'ani de bacha'hot'ah. E di na'l'inko, e di, 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 e a ji e ya e t'adol'ch'ila'oh, a ji'ko. E e bahatses'ango dolell na'l'inko'ko. Di na'al'cha'hi' ben nachi, di di, hoth beda'hadil'neh'igi, a ji na'al'cha'hi'gi do, ch'ix e yisi yin'ao'tcha'di ya, ch'ixi yisi bell'now'le'oh, oh hoth a, na'al'cha'hi' ben na'. A do le'eh, hoth a, di don'na'lin'da. Ha'joo ba'ak'hu'inzin do, ha'joo big'ix'de'ot'ch'ilo, di la' tsodizin don'nah'ha'ga, ah'hu'ha'la'az'zin'ego. Oh hoth a, et'ol'llik'ixi, ha'joo ba't, ba'ta'ch'iyan, ba'ak'hu'inzin no', jo' la' e hoth a, ya'ya'dal'tki. E, e ya e hoth a, ch'ide'ix'ah'ensin, a k'ade, thank you.
Um, chi'eh'eh na'na, um, she, Dr. Joel Jim, dash'jin'eh, ha'edi luk'ah'anshan'cha'chi'ni pasixchin do, e xin dash'ichay do, l'zath'one'eh dash'inali. Oh hoth a, san'sh'ado ka'et'isla'han'and'ei, um, big'edin'chi'ito, ka'eh'na'na n'sha'ho'ui'ji de'le. Ha'edi president Nezdo, Burnett, high deputy incident commander do, Miska do Mr. Chi, k'ae'chi'eh'ka'eh'n'hi'ja. Uh, ha'da'fze' e di jin, k'ade' de'kosin tsana'st, et'ah dah'li'ani'egi, a di kon, an'eh t'ha'hal'ni. Ha'edi, chi'eh'eh na'na k'di'ni da'di, ah'ho'da ha'wan den, da'is'ot'han'egi, hoth a, ben hi'ja'ha'andaitze'ah'ho'ui'ja. Ka'edi, um, di de'kosin tsana'st, et'ah dah'li'ani'ego, do'ego'da dol'kit'ta'ben'ye't, oh hoth a, ha'edi, naaltsos isch'anda di, k'ade', Public Health Order Number Two, Number Twenty Three, go'k'ail'ch'esh. A do di jen, k'at a'ls'is'ob'had'as'et' di, k'ade' isolation do, um, contact tracing do, ke' case management, eh, Miss Pioneer had'zi. Di, k'ade' cares' dollars, do donations, k'afima, da', do, ha'edi, State of Arizona da'ta't, eh'ei do, an'kin'hi'bes'oh, ha'edi n'hi'ja. Hu'li'agi, cares' dollars, so'gi'ani'do. Ha'edi isolation kits, um, k'ev, k'um, dah'hasni'go, ha'edi, den'eh, ha'edi, bat'kohan'ez'ga, dah'ho'wan de'da isolate, dash'ul'ch'isong'go, e k'ae, d'jen'ho'de'li'ing'do, ha'edi, ak'ho'do, um, da'hed'ad'abad'op'beda'od'na'ta'ben'ye'eh. K'ad hoth ende, e k'ade' an'hi'den'eh, k'ade' op'and'ha'ni, kona'eh Facebook, um, flea market, da'ta't, a'ta't, flea market de, um, do, ha'edi online yard sales'od'uni on Facebook. Ha'edi, um, um, e k'ade'hi'ja'ho'dash'ah'ensin, so. I just wanted to let the listener know, the listeners know today that, uh, we just want to make sure that the products are, um, support items for isolation, that the, that we've purchased or received assistance for, for individuals to isolate, um, outdoors, or seeing them on Facebook and also, um, possibly in flea markets where families or individuals are reselling these products. So we, um, wanna ensure that you're, you're not purchasing any items, um, that look like they are an isolation kit. Um, those are very cautious 'cause we don't know if individuals have used those products that were positive. So just ensure that if you're buying camping gear or, uh, bed-like, or a bag of, um, shower bag, or things that we, um, mainly use to isolate individuals, um, are being resold. So just as a caution, um, make sure that, um, that you are not purchasing any items, um, that were used by a COVID positive patient. Um, some other things that we have, that we've seen that possibly might be being resold out there are, are hygiene kits as well. So hygiene kits are for your individual uses, not to be resold. Um, we can certainly assist individuals across the Navajo Nation that need these ice, um, these hygiene kits. But, um, those are for your use and to prevent COVID- nineteen in your family. If you're not able to use it and you receive the hygiene kit, give it to someone else, your neighbor, your, your grandma, your auntie, or somebody else, but, um, reselling it's really not the purpose of those hygiene kits as well. So I just wanted to reiterate that message to everyone, um, today. So, well, thank you everyone for listening today. We appreciate everyone's, um, time this afternoon and we, we can do this. As President mentioned, we're very resilient people, so. Ashin'hi'eta'ni'te'el de'ado, tans'ete'kes'ado, um, hi'den'eh don, him'as'and'oh, him'ay'ja'ta'ta'te'ni, k'ade' a'ls'wan'hi'ek'edon'eh, el'ke'edon'eh'lin'xi. So, oh hoth a, de'beh'adeszeh do, di jin'xi, k'ade', um, all'ha'inda'ain'is'on'ba'sht'eno'da'ol'net'oh, k'ade', um, chi'eh'eh na'na hi'di'ni'to na'na, chi'eh'eh.